Greetings, friends. So many here in the room, and it's lovely to have others that are joining us by Zoom. I'm Sandra Boone Murphy. You might know me by Boone, just a piece of my name. Call me something kind and I'll respond. I'm serving as your facilitator for tonight's Listening Circle, and I serve as initiator and facilitator for Salem Quarter Indian Affairs Committee, as well as PYM First Contact Reconciliation Collaborative. We're members of the Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition and the National Congress of American Indians. With Chief, we sensed the time and resurgence had arrived to honor our relationship and acknowledge times apart and times apart. Both being convinced with original words treated between Lenape and Fenwick Colony, "As long as the sun shines and the waters flow, our hearts are bound to yours." Well, let's open with some gratitude, shall we? Spirit being our guide. Hosts of Woodtown Friends, their clerks, Sally Crane. Thank you for your coordination. Woodstown Monthly Meeting and Steering Committee Liaison is Jack Mann, with appreciation for his carrying of ones wondering, "Can we even do this? Can we have a listening time? Can we get together?" For the Steering Committee, the Salem Quarter Communications Liaison, Carlton Crispin, who is videoing this evening. Thank you, Carlton. To the Steering Committee, Salem Quarter Steering Committee IAC Advocate, Mike Ayers. Thank you, and he will be assisting with our microphone this evening. Salem Quarter Zoom Tech Assistant, Jim Murphy. Thank you. Salem Quarter Indian Affairs Committee Members, Lois Dinsaw, Jim Murphy, and Carol Lively. Thank you. And the many who have helped provide clearness and examination, enabling this moment to rise. Let's settle in for a brief moment of worship and see how a rising land acknowledgement. Let us begin by humbly acknowledging that the land we are on is an ancestral home of Indigenous people. Here at Woodstown Friends Meeting, land of Lenape people. The Lenape call the vast homeland Lenape Hocking, now known as Eastern Pennsylvania, the peninsula of eastern shore Maryland and Delaware, historic Jersey, parts of New York and Connecticut. Lenape land. Participants gathering virtually are likely on Indigenous land too. Let us consider our relationship with the original people and the land that we occupy today. The people of the nearby Kohansi River have remained on their ancient homeland, hiding no more. The Kohansis, now ascribing as Nanakook Lenai Lenape Tribal Nation, are verifiably continuous, historic, familial, and self-governing. By our community's mutually beneficial inheritance toward perpetual peace and friendships, our hearts are bound to yours. Today, may this be the Shaik Bway of Lenape Hocking. Friends, we are prepared, yes, to meet our guest. Chief Yuri Fox Sparrow Ridgeway, Nanakook Lenai Lenape, is a tribal nation citizen of the Bridgeton area and a graduate of Fairleigh Dickinson University, who has served his nation since the mid-1990s, formally as council representative, council secretary, and now as chief, and represents his nation on the New Jersey Commission on American Indian Affairs, where he is seated as co-chair. Chief Ridgeway is a licensed professional engineer working as assistant county engineer for Cumberland County, owner of Sparrow Landscapes, co-founder of Red Blanket Singers, and an emcee, filled with knowledge, humor, and stories. A leader, yeah. Chief Ridgeway is a husband and father. And though there may be another by the same name, let us be clear. Chief Yuri Ridgeway is like none other. Friends, if you will, with prepared, open hearts and ears, greet one's friend, extended family, neighbor. Chief Yuri Ridgeway.
Thank you, Sandy. I say coconut lumino. Greetings, everyone that's here. Delenzi, Yuri Ridgeway. Milong Maki. I guess it would be Turtle Clan, out of the Lenai Lenape people, and also the Nanakook. That's my families. I say that in that way because that's who I am. I'm Nanakook and I'm also Lenai Lenape, a confederation. That's who we are. I just wanted to get a brief explanation of who I am. I said, "My name is Yuri Ridgeway," also known as Fox Sparrow. Also given a name, Spotted Tail, when I was adopted by the Lakota people when I was about 10 years old. Just a brief history of myself and how I come to be in this position where I'm at today. I was very fortunate, as a young man, that when I was about five years old, I was able to go to ceremony with my family in Southern Maryland. I was introduced to those fires, introduced to the tobacco that we use to offer our prayers. I was introduced to the drum, our songs, our music. So at a very young age, I was introduced to what we call this way of life. By the time I was 10, 11, maybe 12 years old, we were going into our sweat lodge ceremonies. We were going to, I guess, might want to say protest, at that time, to stand up about, say, who we were. I guess as being Indigenous people, being Indian people, we learned to, we had to fight for everything that we had. And so they taught us at a very young age to always stand, to be proud. I wore my hair long in this braid ever since I was in elementary school, even though, you know, all the other kids, they would pick on me, call me, "Oh, you're a little girl. Look at you with your long hair," you know. I never wanted to cut my hair at that time, even though they said all kinds of, all kinds of things to me. I always said, "Mom, now keep my hair long. I want my hair long." So I was fortunate to grow up, being proud of who I was, to stand up and say that I am Nanakook, I am Lenai Lenape. As I became older, I began to run a lot. And I got to be known throughout the territories as this runner. And when I would go to other nations, they would say, "Oh, there's Yuri. He's that runner that we see." I was introduced to many different Indian nations just through running alone. Then we started singing with our tribal drum. We called ourselves Lenape Heartbeat, because they say that drum is the heartbeat of our nation. And so we had, we took the name on, Lenape Heartbeat. As we got older, we sang with a drum called Arirwak Mountain, where the Arirwak people out of the Puerto Rico area, we sang with them out of New York City. Then we formed a drum called Otter Trail, where we actually was able to travel all the way out to Albuquerque to some of the biggest powwows. Our CD, I'm going, the CD was, actually, our first album was on cassette tape. So I'm going back a little bit. This is a cassette tape. Then our next album was on CD. And we actually were nominated for a Native American Music Award with that album under Otter Trail. The lead singer moved away. He took the name with him. And then we formed our current drum group, Red Blanket Singers. And we've been fortunate enough to sing with Red Blanket, our family drum, for, ooh, almost 30 years. We've been singing as Red Blanket, traveling across the United States and into Canada to represent our nation. As time went on, my mom and dad, they were always part of this tribal council. They were part of those that first stood up. And after every meeting, they would come back to the house and they would have Big John's Pizza. And we would, they would sit back and talk about the meetings that took place. Maybe our family and a couple other families would get together, kind of like the after-meeting. And so I kind of grew up hearing those stories. I grew up learning about the politics of our nation. And through that, as I became old enough, I decided to run for our council. And I was elected to our tribal council. I served a council in this, that was in probably the late 90s, when I first was elected to our tribal council. I served on our tribal council, became tribal secretary for some period, about four years, stepped back down to tribal council, took a break, stepped away, came back on council again. And then, of course, here I am today, the newly-elected leader. And I just wanted to say really thank you, one issue, to my community for believing in me and putting their faith in me and actually guiding me through all those years to be able to stand here and represent them. And that's what I'm doing. I'm representing my nation, my people. That tells you about who I am. Like I said, I was fortunate enough to go to ceremony at a very, as a very young man, I went to those ceremonies. A lot of people couldn't do that. I was just thinking about it and we're talking about it to my wife on the way coming here. And I began to think, like, one of the ceremonies I went to when I was about 14 years old, five years earlier than that, I would have been arrested for having that ceremony. Just five years before that, I would have been arrested because it was against the law to be at that ceremony. Or you go back even before that, you know, a couple years going to some other ceremonies, I would have been able to have been arrested to go to those ceremonies. But we still did it. My community that I'm from, they say, "Well, where you come from?" Well, there's three communities of us. You have us here in Bridgeton, New Jersey. You have our sister community in Cheswell, Delaware, right outside of Dover. And then you have our other sister community, the Nanakook Community out of Millsboro, Delaware, down by Rehoboth Beach. And I say we're all sister communities because if you look at me, for instance, there was an archaeologist who did a study for the Delaware DOT, Department of Transportation, when they were building US Route 1, and they had to do an archaeological study. And Mr. Ned Height and Kara Bloom, they did this study. And they, hey, guess what? There's Indian folks around here. We found some Indian folks right here in Delaware. Look at this. And they started researching the families of those that were in the Cheswell, Delaware area. And they discovered, hey, well, these are the same families that live in Millsboro, Delaware. And they're the same families that live in Bridgeton, New Jersey. How? They're all related. Look at that. And they published a book. They published a finding for their studies. And they used myself as an example to show the relationships that we have between the communities. And they say that, take for instance Yuri Ridgeway. He's born and raised in Bridgeton, New Jersey. He sits on the tribal council in Bridgeton. However, his parents and grandparents are all born and raised in Cheswell, Delaware. All my family's out of Cheswell, Delaware. But his name Ridgeway originates in Millsboro, Delaware, the Nanakook Community in Millsboro. So there's a prime example how our three communities are interrelated. That's the, what distinguishes us from a lot of other communities. When you walk down the street, you said, "Hey, this house here, this is my grandmom's house. Next house, this is my aunt's house. Next house, this is my brother's house. This is my cousin's house. And this is my mother's house." And this, no, stay away from the house because we get in trouble if we go over there. And you stay over this house. But this is how we recognize when we walk through our communities. Every house that we went to, we were related. So everything you did was noticed by everybody in the community, and it got back to mom and dad, so they knew what you did before you even got home. So that made things a little difficult for us growing up as kids who wanted to get in mischief, but we managed. And saying that and doing that, our communities, we stuck together. I'm gonna give you, go back a little bit in history. And remember I'm saying that, how we were banned. We were banned from going to ceremony. That ban took place in, the Congress actually issued that ban in 1883, is when Congress said, "We banned these specific ceremonies." Well, in 1881, two years prior to that, the Nanakook Community, they went to the state office buildings, the state legislature, and they said, "We want to be recognized as Indian people. We want to, we are saying that we want our separate school system. We want our own school system. We already have our own school system, where only our families go to, only our people go to. Only Indian people go to, Nanakook people go to. And we want to be recognized separate from the coloreds, or the blacks, you might call. We want our own community. We want to be recognized, we want our own funding for this." In 1881, why in 1881 would you stand up knowing that the politics with the US government at that time was that they were even going to ban you from practicing your own culture? But yet they stood up to say that they were Indian, that they were proud of who they are and they want to be. Not, I take this back, "We're gonna be recognized as Indian people. We're tired of being in hiding." Our last speaker of the Nanakook language, 25 years prior to that, had passed away. So our language went away. We still had our families that were still making our fishing nets, still conducting our burial practices, making our own gour, taking gourds to make our own bowls, still practicing some of the old ways. But we no longer had our language. A lot of our ceremonies were being put away. 1930s, the families got together, they started having, 1920s, 1930s, we started having our celebrations. We had our very first powwows back, open to the public, in the 1920s and 1930s. As the war came about, they kind of put those powwows away. In 1970s, they brought them back out. Why in the 1970s? Why in the 70s did they start coming back out? In the 1970s, is when we had, and in the 60s, you had all the, all the very, you know, it was a very emotional time, I guess, in this country. There's a lot of people that were standing up, saying, "We are tired of being oppressed. We're tired of being on the outskirts of things. We want, we want equality." Through the Black Panther movements, things of that nature. A lot of that was happening in the 60s. What a lot of people didn't realize, though, was also in that time period, it was very bad for Native people on the reservations, not necessarily here. It was bad for us here. I mean, I could tell you a story about my dad, you know, living, growing up in the state of Delaware, a segregated state. You know, he was a little bit lighter, his brother was a little bit darker. And so his brother walked down one side of the street, he walked down the other, and they couldn't talk to one another. Or they'll go out to the movies and his brothers would be in the balcony and my dad gets a chance to sit downstairs below. And they would tease him and mock him about that. So they weren't allowed to acknowledge one another on the streets, but when they got home, everything was perfectly fine. So that was what's taken place all throughout the country. And in that time period, and particularly Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in South Dakota, the Lakota people, there's a list on my wall in my house with a poster that I have on the wall. It's a list of names of people who died or were killed, committed suicide, something of that nature. But their, but their death was never investigated. I mean, some of them were, they got shot in the back of their head. "Oh, that's a, that's a suicide." Yeah. They got shot in the back head. It's listed as a suicide. Their deaths never investigated. So that led to what took place, we might heard of, the American Indian Movement, with Dennis Banks and many others that stood up and said that, "Hey, we're tired of being, we're tired of being oppressed as well." And so in 1978, the American Indian Movement, they organized a walk. It started from San Francisco and it went all the way to Washington DC. It was called the Longest Walk. I have friends that were on that walk. I have friends that were born on that walk. Literally born. His mother gave birth on that walk. And so during that time period, they walked from San Francisco to Washington DC. And there's a, there's a, there's a purpose to this story. And when they got to the East Coast, they needed a place to stay in the Washington DC area. And they spoke to somebody called Billy Tyack, a Pascataway leader, Pascataway chief, that lived in Maryland. And they gave him a task of finding sleeping quarters for all of those natives that came in with the American Indian Movement on that Longest Walk. And he found different places for them to stay, a few churches in the DC area. But as politics would have it, when they got to DC, all of a sudden, well, no, you can't stay in our church anymore. So now they have all these Native people that have no place to stay. So they spoke and petitioned the Bureau of Indian Affairs, the BIA. And they said, "Okay, well, we'll open up the BIA doors and you can sleep in the basement." So they went to the BIA building and they began to sleep in the basement, staying in the basement. Well, then they look outside and there's buses rolling up with police and riot gear surrounding the building. And they're like, "Hey, let's lock the," they had to lock the doors. And they barricaded themselves inside the Bureau of Indian Affairs building, Billy Tyack being one of those people, as well as several others that were born and raised here on the East Coast during that time. So when you hear about the American Indian Movement taking over the BIA building, it was, they weren't really taking it over. They were just kind of, you know, locked in to secure themselves. And then they finally took it over, you might want to say. And from that takeover, Billy Tyack became the East Coast American Indian representative. On his territory in Southern Maryland, the same places we went to when I was a little boy in the 70s. Back in the 80s, he started bringing in the American Indian Movement to set up organizations, set up a mindset. And what he did in that 70s period, the late 70s, he was speaking with our former chief, well, actual home chief, Mark Gould. And he hit the mark. So, "Mark, what are you gonna do for your people? You know you're Indian. You know your community exists. What are you gonna do for your people?" And through the assistance of Billy Tyack, through the assistance of his father, Chief Turkey Tyack, our community in Gould Town in Bridgeton, we reorganized ourselves. And then we became known as the Nanakook Lenai Lenape Indians of New Jersey. We took on that name. Later on, we changed it to Nanakook Lenai Lenape Tribal Nation. It wasn't an easy task because Billy Tyack, he called on people like my father, my mother, who knew our histories. He called on the Gould family, the Pierce families, to stand up and try to organize who we were. And so people like my mother and Betty Jackson, they went around, door to door, speaking to our families. And then you had people like my grandmother, who would say, "You can't do that. You can't come out and say that you're Indian in public because they're gonna take everything you have because I remember when they took it from other Indian people that lived here, right here in Salem County, Cumberland County areas." She remembered that. She was born in 1903. One of her greatest days was when she was able to stand up and put a regalia on. I say regalia, her native dress. That was one of her most happiest days of her life, when she was able to finally do that without fear of being persecuted. So our families, we have a strong history when we stuck together. If you weren't from our community, we wouldn't let you into our community. Dad would tell me stories about how, when they lived in Cheswell, somebody drove in town. They came in town in Cheswell, they stopped at a corner store and they're like, "Hey, man, you don't belong here. You don't, you're not one of us. You don't belong here." "Oh, I'm just gonna go in the store and get something." "But you don't belong here. You need to leave." "I'm just getting something out of the store. I'll be, I'm just five minutes." And they flipped his car and made him walk out of town because they did not want anyone else in the community. I hear Mark Gould telling us stories about in Gould Town, how Gould Town, daytime, you come in there, everything's okay. As the sun starts to set and those streetlights come on, if you didn't live in the community, either you're staying in the house with someone or you were escorted out of town. Same thing took place in Nanakook Community. If you weren't from there, you weren't allowed to be there. Except for the fact that our three communities, somehow, some way, we always managed to go down to the other community and steal their women and bring them back to our community. Right, Corey? My wife, she's from the Southern Community. Of course, she's from Millsboro. I did the same thing. Keep, just keeping family traditions alive here. And so our communities were strong like that. If outsiders came into our community, if they started to attend even our churches, we would break off and form a new church. If they attended our schools, we would break off. We would form a new school. If we married outside of the community, you weren't shunned, but you weren't invited to everything either. And a lot of times, you felt uncomfortable coming around, so you would actually move away. You'd move to Philadelphia. You'd move to Collinswood. You'd move to other territories. So you will find our families in Philadelphia. You'll find our families in Collinswood area, Marsville area. Those are families that moved away after certain things may have taken place. But we have a very strong community. And so as that American Indian Movement and our families started to build up, I was attending all of these different protests, growing up, demanding for justices for our family, justices for what was taking place on Big Mountain or for Leonard Peltier. Many different causes would arise. I remember you said I graduated from Fairleigh Dickinson University. And I actually, I remember one semester at Fairleigh, it was in T-Nec Hackensack campus I attended. And it was the 500-year anniversary of Christopher Columbus. And so we were organizing a protest up in New York City at the United Nations. And so every Monday, I had a, I would take off from campus and I would go over to, go over to New York City to organize this protest, this huge protest. We had Indigenous people coming from South America, Central America, from Canada, the United States, all over were coming, descended. And we had to find the logistics out for all of this. And so, of course, that was on every Monday night. And every Monday night, I had two classes that I would miss. And needless to say, I took those two classes again because I didn't do too well that semester. But that was the dedication that I had to those, to my community. But that was the dedication that I had to those, to my community, to my people. Since that time, our families were a strong community. We received our state recognition in 1982. Again, from protesting, shutting down traffic in, in the city of Bridgeton. Because we had to fight for everything. But we did have a lot of support. We had support from people like yourselves. We had support from some, from the local politics, politicians. They supported us. And they stood up, they said, we know who your families are. We know your history. Therefore, we support the state of New Jersey to recognize you as a bona fide indigenous sovereign nation. That's important. As an indigenous sovereign nation. It's a hard concept to, to think about. Even for us as indigenous people, we just, well, we just live it. But to think about the concept, how can you be a sovereign nation within a sovereign nation? The United States is a sovereign nation. New Jersey is a, you know, has its own sovereign abilities as a state. Has the ability to govern itself, to write its own policy. So we, as a sovereign nation, we have that same ability. We write our own policies that controls the government, controls the actions of our own nation. We have laws within our own community. We have a nine-person council that governs, that governs our, our whole community. We have an executive board and then we also have our council at large. Because we also own a nonprofit. You hear the fact that, yo, well, you're, there's some things going around, oh, you're just a, you're just a corporation posing as an indigenous nation. No, we are a indigenous nation that owns a corporation. Because as a federally recognized Indian, because there's three statuses of being Indian in the United States, if you don't know, you can be a federally recognized Indian. Means that the federal government recognizes you as a bona fide Indian nation and you have signed treaty, you have the ability to sign treaties with the United States government. Then you have a state-recognized tribe, meaning that the state recognizes you as a bona fide Indian nation, but the federal government does not. And then you have a non-status Indian, meaning that you're not recognized by the state nor the federal government. We are a state-recognized tribe, a state-recognized community, state-recognized nation. Meaning that we have a relation, a government-to-government relation with the state of New Jersey. I sit on the Commission of American Indian Affairs, where we bring our issues to the commission. When email man was shot and killed by park police in the Ramapo Territories up in, uh, Mahwah, New Jersey, being a Ramapo Indian, we brought that to the state, to the governor's office. And we were able to get a, the governor to issue you a, um, a, goodness, I'm trying to think what it's called. I can't think of it, but he issued a, a document that allowed us to, that allowed him to set up a committee to investigate what actually took place. Not just what took place, but then go out and speak to the three recognized tribes in the state and find out what our other concerns are. And find out those findings. And from those findings, they published a document that said, these are the major issues. Of course, one of the issues at that time was the fact that us being a state-recognized tribe, we have the right to create and sell our own hand goods, our own crafts. And there's, and you can file with the federal government with the Arts and Crafts Act. And by being a state-recognized tribe, you can be a part on that list. But every now and then, they say, the arts and crafts people, they say, hey, you know, we're updating our list in New Jersey. Do you have any other state-recognized tribes? You know you have these three. Do you have any others? And they said, the letter came in, they said, oh, we're giving this letter to the Gaming Commission. And they gave that letter to the Gaming Commission, the ones who control all the gaming in the state of New Jersey, all the casinos. And the Gaming Commission says, oh, wait a minute, there's no state-recognized tribes. And they sort of wrote back to the, to the, to that federal government agency, for the Arts and Crafts Board, and he said, there's no state-recognized tribes. You know, that was only passed by concurrent resolution. It was never made into law. But all the other laws that came along with that, they forgot to look at. And so after, I believe that was in 2007 when that took place, finally, in 2018, after having to sue the state of New Jersey to actually get them to look into it, they decided, okay, yes, you are correct. We, in 82, we were right in our decision. You are state-recognized from 1982 all the way to the present. And we continue to recognize you from this day forward. But it took, we had to actually argue that point until 19, or excuse me, till, yeah, 2018, 2018. It's amazing what we still go through as, as Indian people. My son, he was attending, um, he was attending a, a high school here in the area. I'm not going to say the name of the high school. But turns out to be his coach, who happened to be a history teacher, was teaching to his class that Native Americans offered, they had no impact on today's society. We contributed nothing to today's society in Americas. I don't know, we might have contributed one or two things. I don't know, like maybe the US Constitution, based off the Iroquois, a great law of peace. I don't know. That's just one little thing that we can help contribute. The economy at the time, tobacco is something that we contribute. Different foods, names of the land. So there's, there's a few things that we might have had some little saying about the way things are developed today. Of course, we did a lot of things a lot differently. We had different mentality, a different mindset. But that is who we are as Nanook Lenai Lenape people. I told you that our language went away in nineteen, in nineteen, excuse me, in 1856, our language went away. The last, the last speaker of the Nanook language passed on. We've been working with linguists to resurrect that language, bring that language back. And I'm happy to say that we're putting together a booklet. Hopefully it'll be released, well, not hopefully, it's going to be released sometime soon, within the next month. That's what our Nanook language. Our ceremonies are on their way, on the rise, coming back. We've been speaking with other indigenous nations, other Lenape communities where our families went to, in Canada, in Oklahoma. And through them, they're helping us speak our language. I'm happy to say that my children, every one of them have their name in our language. And I'm proud to say that when they're in school, like my one daughter, she was like, she had her name on her desk and she's like, that's not my name, that's not my full name, that's just my short name, you know? You guys, you got to teach her, you got to spell my whole name out. You just can't shorten it. And so she made her, and it's, it's like 13 letters long. But you know, she had to write her whole name out on her desk. Where she went somewhere and then I'm telling her, she's like five years old and she's like, go out to the pumpkin patch and they write her, what we call her Maheh for short. And they put my on her, she's like, that's not my name, that's not my poem, you got to write my whole name across it. Her full name's Mahawiaki. Means she gathers plenty. So those are the things we're doing today. Right now, we have our tribal land in Fairfield Township. We have 25 acres that we purchased, excuse me, I'll take that back, 28 acres that we purchased. Mary Ward. This was a nice fundraiser she put together. She got a good deal on the property, this is a great deal, we want to buy it. So she got a thousand-piece puzzle, I think it was a thousand-piece puzzle. And she sent a little bit of land in a bag, in a little Ziploc bag, and a puzzle piece with a letter that said, this land, this piece of land that's in this bag could be yours. Return the puzzle piece and a $10 donation. And everybody sent in $10 and that puzzle piece. And we were able to purchase that land from that fundraiser that she did. We received every puzzle piece except for one. The person passed away before it was sent in. And so to this day, we keep that puzzle piece, one piece removed. We didn't retrieve it back from the family. But we were able to do that. Since that time, since that 28 acres, we, the tribe purchased another 25 acres across the street from where we were at before, from there. So now we have about approximately 50 acres of land in Fairfield Township that we call our tribal homeland, our tribal land. On that land, we have our, our building where we conduct our tribal meetings. We construct our, construct our tribal gatherings. You've been to? A few here have been to those meetings, those gatherings that we have. We're in the process today, we've just received our site plan approvals to put up what we call a chimwit of the Nanook Lenai Lenape. A chimwit, one who tells the story of the Nanook Lenai Lenape, our new tribal museum. So we just received the site plans approval. We have our zoning approval, site plan approval. So hopefully really soon, we're going to be going through and the building is up. So now we're going to be going out for bids real soon to retrofit the building, put in our parking areas and our stormwater detention basins and everything we have to do is part of that. And we will have a chimwit of the Nanook Lenai Lenape opened up for everyone to come and enjoy. We have our annual powwow, second week in June, right here, actually, right, not too far, Salem County Fairgrounds. We have our annual powwow. If you've never been there, bring the family out. It's a very good time. You get to see a lot of, a lot of the dances, a lot of the socialism that we have. Hear some of the songs, visit our craft vendors. But we are bringing back our language, we're bringing back our songs, all the songs that Red Blanket sings, I was talking about Red Blanket. Most of the songs that we sing are original compositions. We sang some old songs. We do know old songs, but we like, we write new songs in our own language because everybody knows that, you know, you can remember a song, if you, nothing else, you will remember how a song goes. Because I'm sure everybody here could probably think back 30 years of, of a song that was playing, almost singing it word for word. And that's something that we do with our language. We find out, we put the language in song. It's easier to remember. And now we have more and more people that are just on an everyday basis, sharing the language. Just a little here or there, so it's more commonplace to speak our language and to say our language on a daily basis. Those are some of the things that we do, some of the things that we have going on today. We have our tribal center in downtown Bridgeton, separated from Fairfield Township, it's right in downtown Bridgeton where we have our storefront and we have our tribal offices where we offer different services to our tribal communities. And where our tribal artists can sell their crafts. So if you ever need to go down to the store, you know, go on down there, check that out. I'm not trying to promote the store. It's not, I'm sorry, that wasn't a plug, but I guess it was. But it's nice to show you that what we have going on today, we still have a living, thriving community that's evolving, that's still growing, still, I don't want to say learning, I want to say we're, we are remembering what's inside of our DNA and bringing that back out. You know, a lot of people say that you have, um, generational trauma that's instilled within your DNA. The traumatic things that your ancestors went through is brought to you. But we also have to remember those beautiful things that were also in our ancestors are also carried down. Those good feelings, those good things that are in their heart, that are in their soul, that's in their DNA is also carried down. So those are the things that we try to bring out. I know every one of, there's not too many native people I know that do not like to laugh. We sit back and we tell jokes, usually at each other's expense, on a daily basis. It's just one of the things we do. So if you're ever around our native community and we're not really talking to you, we're not saying much to you, that, that would mean we wouldn't like you. But if we're, if we're making fun of you and we're joking with you, that means we like you a lot. But however, we still have, like I said, those things in our DNA where I talked to you about how if you weren't from our community, we wouldn't let you in. So it takes trust. We have to build those trusts. We do have those trust issues. When people come around our community and they say, oh, we want to do this for you, we're going to help you. Did we say we needed help? Not that we don't need it, but did we, did we actually say we wanted it? As we talk more, actions are carried out more. We begin to know you, we begin to accept you. And then once you're accepted, things just naturally take place. But we do have those feelings inside of ourselves to be standoffish, to stand back, to listen, to watch. I get criticized sometimes because Yuri, you don't take a stance on a certain issue right away. Seems like you're riding the fence. And I say, well, of course I ride the fence on that because until I hear this side, this story and this story, until I can hear the complete story, will I render a decision? Because I can't, if I immediately make a decision, am I really thinking things through? Am I really doing what's best? So I will listen to the, what takes place before I can decide how I want to proceed with things. I get criticized for that sometimes, but it's something that I need to do. If I'm willing to help lead our community, I just said help lead because I'm just, I'm just Yuri Ridgeway, five foot two, very short, you know, small guy. I need lots of help to make this happen. A lot of support from my family, a lot of support from our tribal community. Listen, listen to what they have to say, to things that they want, to things that they need. And then we can make the proper decisions as we need to. So with that saying, I get, well, um, go ahead and, uh, open to the floor, huh? Do we have anybody with any questions at this time you might want to ask? If you do, uh, I believe they said, want you to come up to the microphone and ask your questions, or if we have anybody online?
When you lost your language, was there much written down?
When we lost our language, was there much written down? There's two languages that we speak. Uh, I said we're a confederated tribe, Nanook and Lenai Lenape. The Lenape side, yes, there was much language that was written and there's still some fluent speakers of the language. There's several different dialects of the language. But yes, it is, a lot of the Lenape language is written down. And as being Lenape, we're the grandfather people, we're the old, we're the, we're the original, we're the old ones. And a lot of like the Nanook descended from the Lenape. So with the Nanook language, uh, two different presidents had individuals seek out the Nanook people and write down language. But with that, there may have been only four, maybe 400 words that was written down. That was it of the entire language and some of them were repetitive out of the, out of the list. So with that being said, we were, we were fortunate enough to work with a linguist who was extremely intelligent, extremely intelligent. He was able to break down the words in Nanook to their base form like in Lenape to see how they were built up and then break them down and then build up additional words in the same format. The man's amazing. He's, I can't give Keith Cunningham more praises. He's amazing in what he does. He's not native, but he just, the language is just his thing. So there wasn't many words that were, that survived in the Nanook language. But we are in the process of building it back up and speaking it. Question on line.
It's a question from the Zoom, please. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I was born and raised in North Central Texas. And in fact, in my little town, they signed a treaty, one of the many that was broken, uh, to, uh, try to have peace, but it ended up being, um, of course, uh, uh, more and more persecution of the indigenous Of course, uh, uh, more and more persecution of the indigenous people there. But among them was a chief who was, a group called the Delaware. And I wondered if that was the same as the Lenai Lenape.
Yes. Uh, she was wondering if the, I'm gonna repeat the question. Uh, that, if the Delaware are the same as the Lenai Lenape. And the answer to that question is yes, they are the same. The. The Lenai Lenape people were renamed Delawares for Sir Delo, Sir Delaware. Who was the governor of the territories and I can't think of actually where he was at. But then the Delaware Bay was named after him and all the inhabitants that lived along the Delaware Bay were also called Delaware. So the Lenape people were called Delawares and the people that you're referring to in Texas, South Central Texas. After they broke off in Kansas. With the main band, the main group in Kansas. Some of them went to settle in Bartlesville, Oklahoma, under the Cherokees direction, and some went down into Texas. And they became known as absentee Delawares or as they came around on the backside. In Oklahoma, they settled in Anandarko, Oklahoma. And they became, like I said, the absentee Delawares or the Delaware Nation as you know them today. And they, and they reside around Anandarko, Oklahoma. But yes, that is the Delaware, the Delaware Nation or the Delaware people are Lenai Lenape.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you for that. Uh, I was wondering. What your, what you hope now for your people over the next twenty years or something? And also, as a sort of slightly side question, what? What you do welcome from the white community?
What we do welcome?
Yeah. I mean, you're talking about your absolutely understandable suspicion and hostility. What, you know?
Okay. I understand the question. Okay. What I would see for our community within, say like the next twenty years or so, way. One of my projections that, or one of the things I stand for is that. I want to continue. For our people to stand up and be proud of who they are. That's first of all, first of all. And just the biggest, one of our biggest things we have right now is that. We are, according to the, the latest census, we are the largest tribe within the state of New Jersey. The largest nation within the state of New Jersey, Nanakook Lenai Lenape. Fairfield Township has the largest population. Cumberland County and in Fairfield Township has the largest population of, of, of Nanakook Lenai Lenape. We have the largest number of students percentage wise in, in the school district. And if you go and you speak to any one of those teachers or many of these teachers at random, majority of them Nanakook Lenai who? I don't know about the Nanakook, there's Indians that still exist in the state of New Jersey. They're still here. I thought we, I thought they were done with. So one of our biggest hurdles that we wanna push forward and knock over, I guess I wanna say is. To continue to let people know that we are still here. We were silent for a long time. But we're letting people know that we are still alive, our culture's still alive and. The generations are continuing to exist. That's our, that's, that's where I want our family, our people to go. I don't, I mean, yes, I would like to see our people prosper financially and I'd like to see our people expand culturally. And with our language, I love to hear my kids argue in our language. That'd be great. And. But I would like to see people, let people know that we are still here. That's one of our biggest things. As, if, if they know that we're here. Then a lot of the. I guess tensions, anxieties will settle down. Like I said, uh, I'm fifty-two years old now. I've been going to protest since I was five. And I still go to this day. And it's like, why do we still have to fight to stay who we are? That's, that's our main thing. What do I, what would I want from the non? Non-native, um. Peoples? Just the understanding. That's our main thing that we need to understand. Land is always a good thing. Land's always beautiful. But our main thing is we have to have, we have to change our mindset. About each other, about the, and I speak in particular to the. To the indigenous peoples. We have to change our mindset about indigenous peoples. We're not, um, a lot of times I, when I give presentations, a lot of times I'll, I'll ask the crowd, I'll say, and this is a long-winded question, a long-winded answer. But I'll ask the crowd, what's the first thing you think of when I say Indian? Anybody? Don't wanna go for that one? Okay, go ahead. Here first. You know, I always get things like teepees and I get, and I get, um, uh, long hair, you know. I get, uh, you know, they, they run fast, you know, I get, I get all of these stereotypical responses to. To being Indian, what an Indian is. And I, I have to, I have to put asterisks on that one because we went to, we did a presentation at a, at a, um, school in Philadelphia. And we asked that kind of question and they're like, oh, well, we think of wigwams and we think of, and they started not just talking about indigenous people like. They said things that were actually correct and proper. And they were, well, Indian people live in these territories around here. This would be, this would have been the Lenai Lenape. And then you had Susquehannix over to the western of us. And, and they were just breaking it down. I'm like, who are these kids? Where'd they come from? Um, it was wonderful, but I would always get those stereotypes. And I always have to say, well, you know, do you ever think of, um. When I say Indian, do you think of? Engineers? Do you think of doctors? How about Vice President of the United States? People forget. Under Hoover, Curtis was American Indian. Grew up on the reservation. And he was our Vice President of the United States under Hoover. People don't know that fact. Why do you not know that fact? Jackie Robinson, he broke the color barrier in baseball. Except for the fact fifty years prior to Jackie Robinson, missed, I always mess his name up, Sakalies? Sakalies? Played for the Cleveland Spiders. The Cleveland Spiders. He was Penobscot. Fifty years prior to Jackie Robinson, but we don't hear about him. Why do we not hear about him? That's what we tried to change. Want people to know that we're still here. We were part of that society. And we are doctors, we're lawyers, we're Vice Presidents of the United States. And so the big thing that, like I said, I went from the non-native community is, is, is a, a mindset. That appreciates who we are, what we are, and that we are still here. So, question?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for allowing us in, you know. Um, I wanted to ask you, I guess it's actually two questions, but I can condense it. Is there an issue currently? That you, the tribe is up against a, some sort of a, a problem that you have to deal with? That maybe those of us that are outside don't know about? And also is there an issue within that maybe all of us have and are able to, to relate to?
Well, some of the things that were, that are within, we try to keep things within. We keep them with our families. We try not to air out too much of the things that are going on. Um, but one of the, one of our biggest fights we have right now. Uh, of course, you know, we had our state recognition. That was a big fight. And through the support of this community right here, the, um, the friends. The, um, we were able to regain, not regain, reaffirm, I should say, our state recognition. So that was a big fight. One of the fights that we have going on right now is the fact that, um, we have to fight our own people. About our own identity. Um, unfortunately, there are some indigenous peoples throughout. I guess the whole United States. They claim native identity and they're, they do not, they're not really of native blood. They don't belong to a native community, native tribe. And because we don't have the status of federal recognition, federal recognition. Even though the federal government has recognized our community on several occasions. I mean, I can go back to nineteen forties when the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Documents our community on their own maps that they put out. Um, or our families are going to the Native American boarding schools. Any of this, um, and the BIA labels them as being Indian. I mean, I can go on and on with some, a lot of things how the federal government recognizes, but yet we're not federally recognized. By us not having that federal recognition card. Those that do have it attack the other nations that don't. And they say that you're a self-proclaimed Indian or, or wannabe or, um. The current acronym is C-PAIN Corporation. And so we're fighting those types of battles, those types of things. And, and that's unfortunate that we have to fight those things. We have to, we have to prove to our own people who we are. We're in the process right now of applying for federal recognition. And so we, right now, we're going through the process of proving to the federal government who we are, even though they already have it. It's amazing how that works. You know, you put all your ducks in a row and you put on a paper like, this is who I am, this is who I am, this is who I am, this is my family, this is my heritage, this is my histories. And it's, it's a stack of papers about this big and you have to submit it in and they have to backcheck it. Well, where are they getting the information to backcheck it from if they don't already have the information? It's just, you know, they already know who we are. They already have our histories and they're just backchecking them and make sure that you know who you are. And so we're in that process right now doing those type of things. So that's, that's our major, one of our major concerns. Um, other than that, man, we're moving along. We're having a, a wonderful time in our community. We still, I guess we're family, so we argue and fight one another all the time. That's, that's just the way it is. Dad would tell me stories about the picnics they used to have in, in Woodland Beach in Delaware. And the boat would come over from Jersey and go to Delaware and the guys would jump off the boat into the water and be fighting in the water before the boat even docks. And that's, we just like to fight. We're just, that's who we are. It's a wonderful thing. And so, but together we are making strides. Like I said, our museum is a wonderful thing that we're fighting to get put up and get erected. That's our. That's our main thing right now. That's our main goal. That's in the forefront of us that we're fighting for and going for. But, um. Yeah, that's it. I think, I think I answered it.
Nathan Schreuer, hello. What is your question for Chief?
Yes, and I turned off my video so that you can hear me, my connectivity. I just wanna, here's some appreciation. I know that I can echo what many of us are probably feeling very deeply right now is appreciation for you. And for your people for coming out here and speaking and sharing with us. I live on the Antico lands. I live in a place called Quaker Neck. That was set in the sixteen seventies. And there are rivers around me that have English names like Chester and Langford. Or the Chesapeake Bay. And I don't know the indigenous names. But I did notice that on the John Smith map, right across the river from where that. There was an enormous settlement of Antico peoples living for thousands of people called Wukomas on that map. I wanted to appreciate you and thank you. To lift up, um, that history. And we've, we've been in this relationship with your peoples for more than three hundred and fifty years. And we consider ourselves spiritual peoples of integrity and community and peace. And yet we've been in a fraught relationship that has encouraged and caused me to stomach arms. Could you talk about what friends, Quakers and people of faith and spirituality can do to support indigenous peoples? From your experience?
What can they do to support us? I mean, there's many different ways of support. First thing, you know, people always, well, you know, financial support, always needed. We always have bills to pay. But there's, um, there's a lot more to that. Some of the fights that we're going to, that we're going through, um, I say fights, but not really fights, some of the challenges, I should say, that we're going through. For instance, our federal recognition process. We will need the support of. One of the criteria we have to go through is what the outside public thinks of our nation. And we would need letters of support documenting, uh, our relationships. So I'm sure at some point we'll be turning to the Quakers and to the meeting house to. Ask for letters of support, if you're willing to do that for us. Indigenous communities throughout the territories, they may have different programming, different activities, different, um. Tasks that they have within their own communities that they're going to need support for. And it could be through, um, just food drives or. Clothing drives, things like that, where there's something that takes place where we had people in our houses that, you know, where their houses burned down or different things of that nature. But there's many ways that you can support a tribal community. Uh, one of the ways is, like I said. Letting people know that we're still here. Hey, that's a, that's a great way. Financial support is also needed, but that's not, again, what I'm here for. I'm here just to talk about our relationships and build this relationship, build this friendship that we have. And I come here and I, I talk and I, I say things and I don't want you to just, just accept these things that I say. Do your research, look it up. Do your research on my families. Do your research on our communities. Do the research on the communities around you. And then if you have those, if the Quakers, if the, uh, the meeting houses, if you go through your histories and you look through your history books. And maybe you have reference, you have documentation on the indigenous people with the relationships. You know, find a way to copy those and turn them over to the local native communities to make it part of their record. They can have it as part of their histories as well. That's how you can help them out. Maybe you have, uh, histories that are written down that they can use as part of their records. That we, like, that's something that we would need as far as that federal recognition process. So that's, those are just some of the ways that you can help. But each community is a little different. Um, and until you actually start getting to know that community and relating with that community. And I say this now is that, um. Get to know us. I'm, I'm offering this, this hand of friendship to you now. Get to know our community. Come out, experience some of our events as we have them. And get to know us. We're willing to come here and speak so, so you can understand who we are and I'm willing to try to know you. As a whole and as individuals. Cause that's how we help one another. Thank you.
I keep having my questions sort of answered, but you, um, sort of touched on what I was about to ask. It's awesome that you were able to recover, um, a part of your spoken language. Would you say there is more, um. History and artifacts out there for you to, to find on your tribe? You know what I mean?
Yes. I can say in desperate, that's, that's a definite yes. Even though we're building back up our languages and we're rebuilding our cultures, remembering our cultures, remembering our ceremonies and are coming to us. We're building those up. And, um, so yes, there's a lot more out there for us to, to locate. Uh, for instance, I've been having talks, um. With some other Lenape people from other communities. And they were saying how. He spoke with an elder. Who was told that they were, that our traditions were passed on to another man who was to hold them. That's something that we did, especially with amongst the, the Iroquois nations and other nations. We would go to those nations as we're passing through. Remember the Lenape people, she said, we're all the way out in Texas. Our Lenape people made it all the way into Oklahoma, Texas, Mexico, Colorado. You're gonna find bands of Lenape people, communities of Lenape people. And with that, along those routes, a lot of times we gave some of our culture. Okay, so we got, we gave a lot of our. Okay, so, we got... we gave a lot of our culture to those... to those other Indian nations to hold on to for us until we're able to gain our feet back to our... under ourselves and accept... and re-accept those when we're strong enough to accept them. And we're getting to a point now where we're starting to get our feet back under us. We're starting to stand up as human beings and go back and retrieve those things that were held on elsewhere. So, I'm not just talking about artifacts buried in the ground. I'm talking about knowledge that's handed down to individuals. Yes, ma'am?
You mentioned early on Lakota when you were five, and also that you were given a name, Spotted Tail.
Yes.
I was wondering how the Lakota figure into your current situation? And also, assuming a Lakota family were transferred for a job into this area, um, if they were wealthy and they were tech-savvy, they would be able to connect with their original roots wherever they came from. But what, you know, what if a family moved into this area? How would your, um, people handle that?
Okay, with... going to the first part of the question being, um, like I said, adopted into the Lakota family, that was, goodness, many, many years ago, and unfortunately, I no longer have contact with that family. Uh, Spotted Tail was a well-known chief amongst the Lakota peoples, and, um, I could never live up to him, that's for sure, in receiving that name. But, um, other people, we do have scenarios where we have other indigenous people move into the area, and they settle down within the community. And we open the doors up to them. We bring them in, we allow them to, we share our food with them, we share our ceremonies with them, we share everything with them, because we treat them as family, as long as they're treating us like families as well. And when they... so, when they come in, it's... we're very small people. We're a small number of people. I think we make up, what, two percent of the whole population of the United States, two percent. Um, so, we look out for one another. So, when people come in, we try to open our doors up to those communities, or to those individuals, and and treat them as family. Yeah, so, they're welcome. And if they help... if they can help us out, great. If we can help them, that's even better. In fact, I believe in our... in our original charter papers that we talk about, um, supporting the indigenous people no matter where they come from, when they come to our territory. Yeah.
Hi. Um, my question is regarding the sister communities that you mentioned in Delaware. Were they able to achieve, um, state recognition as well, sovereignty in the state of Delaware? Um, the second part of my question is, uh, it's a different bent, but how do you feel about what seems to be a change across the country as far as recognizing indigenous peoples? Um, for instance, Columbus Day is known now as Indigenous Peoples' Day in many, many communities, and also, like, major sports teams are changing their names. Um, do you feel that that is a positive move forward for all indigenous peoples, all Native Americans?
Okay, as far as the state recognition of the, uh, my sister communities, yes, they are both state-recognized within the state of Delaware. And, um, I believe the Nanakook community, they received it in, I believe it was 1923? Where my wife go? Ah, she just left. Hope she didn't leave me. But, uh, I believe it was 1923 or '21, they actually received their state recognition. It was reaffirmed in the 19... in 20... When was it, 20... I'm trying to think. When Cheswell, Delaware, received their state recognition, it was 2006, maybe. They received theirs. I think it was 2006. Don't quote me on that one, please. But... and then, when they received theirs, also, the Nanakook community was reaffirmed theirs as well. Their state recognition was updated, to be a little more modernized. But yes, they are both state-recognized tribes in the state of Delaware, and they have a very long history, undocumented history, undoubtable about who they are. As far as the mascots are concerned, uh, I myself, I can speak on my own behalf on this one, and yes, it's about time some of those mascots are changed. Um, it's about time. It's, uh... With the Washington commanders, their formal name, it was very much a racial slur. Or there... I just read something, "Oh, there's a group of Native Americans who want the name back." And it's like, and it was, you know, what we've... natives referred to themselves as, at a certain point in time, they called themselves that. And yes, they... yes, they did. But when there's a bounty put out for the scalps of Native people, men, women, and children, and I'm talking like, equivalent for today, it might be $5,000 per scalp in today's monies. And so, it was okay for you to go out and take their scalp and bring back their red skin. That's what the scalp was called. It had to still be bloodied. You bring them back, and you can receive monies for it. Yeah, that needs to change. There's no honor in calling your... your school that name. So, yeah, so that's what I... that's how I personally feel about that, yes. And there was another question in there, wasn't there?
It was about the Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Indigenous Peoples' Day, yeah. I'm very supportive of that. I'm, you know, the history of Columbus is very much, I should say, um, uh, wrong. Not wrong. The way it's portrayed is very inaccurate. Or I should say, it's accurate from one point of view, and the other point of view is neglected to be part of that, you know. When this... when they came in, and Columbus came in, they tied the people up, um, on the... They would test out their blades, see how sharp they were by how many slices it would take to get through an Indian person that was tied up onto a column. They would tie them up in there and say, "Okay, how many slices does it take to get to the..." You know, to get through them. That determines how sharp the blade is, you know. Or playing catch with the woman's breast that was cut out of her chest, you know, things of that nature. Those are the things you didn't read about, and I can say those things here because we're old enough to understand those things. And that's part of the history that's not taught with that. And so, imagine reading through a history book how great this man is, but then you're taught at home that, "Yeah, this man, you know, he did those type of things to your great-great-grandparents." So, those are the type of things. I'm glad... I'm glad that those histories are finally being brought out and brought to light, and that, you know, these atrocities happened right here on American soils, on the United States, on Americas. I just... I gotta say Americas because North, South, Central America, all those things happened. And so, I knew people today that are political refugees that are fleeing their Central American, um, countries because there's bounties out on them because they're the next in line to be the hereditary chief. Yeah, so... I'm glad those things are being talked about today. I think... any other questions? I mean, I'm willing to take more over here, ma'am.
Us, the people aware that, uh, Lenai Lenape still are here. What's being done in children's literature to help them introduce not the negative concepts, but the concepts, these were real people and they can still be identified. They're not our ancient history, that's what they're now.
Some of the things we're working with, um, the Indian Commission, we've been working recently with a group to come in and evaluate and work with the Department of Education to reevaluate their teaching process, their emplace curriculum in specific for Native Americans. We've been working clo... we've started, I can say, not working closely, we're starting to, we're beginning to work with, say, like, Stockton State College, University of Delaware, where we're offering curriculum to actually to change the curriculum and have it be taught by our people inside the classrooms to the students. And so, those are some of the things we're trying to... we're really trying to change the history books, the education books, yes.
Just children's books or little guys can change the awareness that this is not ancient history. But it's now, and that's especially what I'm thinking of, who want to give it to their grandchildren to say, "This is where this thing came from, these people who are here before us, that conduces them." Hopefully, this will happen.
I do know we do have some tribal members that are writing quite a few children's books right now, and they have them available. Um, so, yes, we're... you are absolutely 100% correct. I agree with you 100%. That's our children, not just, say, Indian children, I'm saying children in general. Brainwash them while they're young. No kidding, no. But no, make those... make those teachings accessible to them at a young age so they're taught those things.
These have been wonderful pieces of information that you've brought genuinely from your heart and had opportunity, and thank you so much, Chief Yori, for entertaining our thoughts.
One issue. I just want to say, you know, one issue, thank you to each and every one of you for coming out, taking time out of your busy schedules. Uh, I really hope this little open session here was enlightening and also, just, maybe a good time. All right, and we've all learned a little bit from one another. Um, and we can continue on and build from this day forward a relationship that goes on in the future. I really look forward to that. And our language, there's no words for goodbye. Uh, we say, "We'll see you again in the future," so I say, "Gapetch kanon," or "Gapetch kanon mino," greetings, or "We'll see all you guys in the future again, somewhere. If I don't see you in this lifetime, I'll see you in the next one." All right, so, that's it. Nishi, thank you.
Thank you, Noel.